Okay, going live now. Okay, are we live? Yes, thank you. We're back. Thank you all very much. Hope you had a reasonable break. Whatever you needed to do. We're on 54D Development Charges Interest Rate Recommendation Related to Bill 108 Changes and Related Site Plan Changes. Any comments or questions from staff on that report? I'm thinking Mike Cigarek specifically. Mike? Assuming you're there. I didn't ask if staff were there, sorry. I'm assuming you are. Mike, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. So we do have, I believe, Lindsay and Anita. If there are some specific questions, the reason this is before you, just a reminder to committee members that because of legislative changes under Bill 108, there are different payment periods now as it relates to the collection of growth-related costs. Previously, would it been under the development, building, sorry, building permit issuance? And now some of the collection of growth-related fees are as early as site plan application or I believe the installation permit. And as a result, and I'll just remind committee members, one of the principles the province was working towards under Bill 108 was revenue neutrality to municipality. And this report sets out to work towards revenue neutrality, recognizing that those fees would be locked in for, I believe, a period of up to two years prior to the building permit issuance. And so again, the reason that this report's before you is try to preserve some growth-related revenues for the city. And Anita or Lindsay can take you through some of the mechanics if there's questions as it relates to the various forms of development because there are different requirements for different forms of development.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go to questions, I think, at this point. The report has been readable. We need a mover in a second or just to get it on the floor. Moved by Ferguson, second by Marula, I saw first and foremost, sorry. And we're gonna turn to Councilor Whitehead for speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually put my speaker request in so I could move it, but I guess it doesn't work.
I'm variable. I didn't see it. All I saw was hands going up for move. We're taking that as the mover and seconder. But feel free to ask the mover. Okay, no questions? Okay, thank you. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. So the 2% over and above Bank of Canada Prime, is that a legislated percentage? Or do we have the discretion to charge whatever we want?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, it is a discretionary decision of council staff. Again, working towards revenue neutrality. We looked at what the previous development charges might have been for these forms of development. And there are different interest rates based on the form of development. So the forms of development that would be locked in at site plan application, again, what you see before you, it's, it works out to about 2.45%. The forms of development that would be set at occupancy would be a rate of 4.45%. So again, the objective is revenue neutrality and based on the different timing of the, of the collection of DCs and when they're payable explains the different rates. And Lindsay and Anita might be able to take you through the downtown SEPA because there's a factor as it relates to the downtown SEPA as well.
That's not necessary for me, but I thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you. I see no further questions being indicated. So we have a mover and a seconder. Let's go to a vote. All in favor? Or opposed? I am not seeing a vote. And why would I not be seeing a vote? Councilor Pearson, you're okay?
I'm okay.
All right, thanks. Councilor Farr, you're okay? Sorry, who else? I'm okay. If someone could check on my eScribe here, that'd be great. And that is carried with one, one absent. Thank you. And we're gonna turn to the Energy Board Notice of Hearing for Enbridge Gas Recommendations 54E. Recommendations are in the report. Any comments or questions on it? Councilor Johnson, question?
Thank you. Not really a question, but every time I go on to a request to speak, it says, sorry, it's not up on eScribe yet. So that's number one. Number two, when I bring up the Ontario Energy Board Notice of Hearing, the tab at the top actually is the AEGD wastewater capacity allocation. So I just wanted to let the clerks know that there might be a tech glitch. And I may be waving. When I'm waving frantically, it means I wanna speak. Sorry. It won't let me have, it won't let me put it on.
I think we're catching you while you're doing that, so I've got that. I can see everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, Councilor Farr, go ahead.
I am clearly on eScribe and I'm not able to vote, so thanks.
Well, let's see what happens this time around. I think I had mine adjusted, so I wasn't able to vote last time either. A mover and a seconder on this one. Moved by Pearson, second by Danko. All in favor? See if the vote pops up for everybody, hopefully. It's not popping up for me. Is it up? It's coming. Okay, there we go. I got it. Anyone else not having it pop up for them? Give us an indicator. Not for Judy. So you're okay on the vote? Thank you. Jason, you're okay? Yep. Anyone else not be able to vote that wants to just give me the thumbs up or thumbs down? We're good? All right, great. Thank you. And turn to item one, utilizing the rooftop of York Boulevard Parkade on temporary open air performance space. Councilor Farr, your name is on it, so do you wanna lead off? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just calling it up now. And thank you very much for your, for your effort. Certainly, you worked closely, I know, with Jason and others in hopefully making this happen. It's a perfect motion for the times. And the timing of the motion is good, too. So moved by myself, seconded by yourself, utilizing the rooftop of York Boulevard Parkade as a temporary open air performance space. Whereas January 2014, Hamilton Council approved the music strategy, which included four goals to strengthen the local music industry, grow audiences and appreciation of music, increase access to music experience, and cultivate music creation and talent. Whereas in March 2019, council approved the creative industry sector profile report and implementation recommendations in which music was identified as one of the city's top growth areas. Hamilton's music industry and the next where as employs an estimated 7,725 workers and is a total of 541 businesses. Whereas the Live Music Venues Research Report has identified that Hamilton's direct GDP from music venues is 32.6 million, with 2.6 billion from property taxes and total revenues generated by venues with 62.7 million. Whereas the city, with the support and advice of the Hamilton Music Advisory Team, or HMAT, has completed a number of actions, including musicians, loading zones, annual music conferences, social media and marketing efforts, Music Mondays, outdoor concerts at City Hall, one-to-one mentoring for musicians, support for Hamilton Public Library's music archive, Hamilton showcases at local venues, and a completion of a draft live music venue report that measures the economic and social impacts of the city's live music sector. Whereas the provincial orders resulting from COVID-19 have had a significant impact on the music and performance arts sectors. Whereas the required closure of a number of venues that normally host such performances has negatively impacted artists as well as host organizations and venue operators. Whereas the city's Economic Development Division's Business Impact Survey found that 71% of creative businesses reported that COVID had impacted their revenues by more than 50. And 36% businesses in the sector have decreased employment by 100%, 100%. Whereas temporarily repurposing a city-owned space to be used by the local performing arts industry provides an opportunity to support the performing arts sector during COVID-19 recovery phase. And whereas, in considering the potential locations for such a use at the top level of York Boulevard Parkade represents a number of benefits, including that it is currently underutilized, very much so, and it would not displace other users, which may be in the case for other public spaces such as parks. It is fully accessible. It's got an elevator there and allows for audiences, audience sizes to be controlled. And it does not have immediate surrounding sensitive land uses such as residential uses. Therefore, be it resolved that staff from the corporate real estate office and Tourism and Culture Division in consultation with Transportation Planning and Parking Division be authorized and directed to initiate an open call seeking interest from potential licensees to operate a small temporary open air performance space venue to be located on the underutilized top level of the York Boulevard Parkade, located at 28 York Boulevard for the 2020 season, in which that would include organizing, scheduling, and managing a small performance series program. And B, that the general manager of planning and economic development or their designate be authorized and directed to negotiate and execute a license agreement, any other necessary documents on behalf of the city with a successful proponent, the licensee for the use of the top level of the York Boulevard Parkade as a temporary open air performance space venue based substantially on the terms and conditions attached with such other content satisfactory to the general manager of planning and economic development and informed satisfactory to the city solicitor. C, that Tourism and Culture Division be authorized and directed to contribute to the initial startup cost related to the creation of a temporary open air performance space venue at the York Boulevard Parkade to an upset limit of $7,500 to be funded from the city's economic development reserve. And D, that the real estate and legal fees of $1,500 be associated with a license agreement for the use of the York Boulevard Parkade as a temporary open air performance space venue be funded from the city's economic development reserve credited to account number, and it's their real estate admin recovery. And again, very briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is your motion. You are the chair. I am moving in in your stead. I am honored to be a seconder, and there are more than enough wheresties that explain things fully. So I think that's all the time I need.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanna acknowledge Jason Thorne, you know, came up with this creative idea to use that parkade space. So he's innovative in many, many, many different ways. And full credit goes to him in terms of coming up with this, I think, novel idea for an industry that obviously is, is gonna struggle for quite some time. And so, you know, providing an opportunity for a space that can, you know, allow for physical distancing, but still allow for a venue to happen, I think, is a, is an opportunity for the music in the street to still entertain while still maintaining that physical distancing issues that we're all gonna be dealing with for quite some time. So thank you to Jason for the idea. Delighted to work with him on, on creating a motion. And thank you, Jason Farr, for bringing it forward. And obviously, it's a, it's a downtown impact, but certainly a citywide opportunity for people to get entertainment that currently isn't happening anywhere, other than Netflix or whatever else you're watching on the tube. And there's lots of, lots of posts going on, lots of virtual stuff going on as well. But there's nothing, you know, nothing like live, live entertainment. And if we can make that work in this, in this space, I think that'd be absolutely brilliant. So I'm gonna go to questions. Councilor Clark, you're up first, then Councilor Marula, then Councilor Partridge. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions, and I think this is a very innovative concept and idea. So I guess the first question is around the province's provincial order of five people gathering. So they're not allowing restaurants to be open yet. You can only do takeout. So how do we set up this lease agreement, knowing that we may not get to the point where the province says, yes, you can do this?
If Jason's on the line, I'll certainly ask him to answer, but it's, it's on the presumption that, that this is gonna be an allowable event, depending on when we get there. So, you know, it would have to be an event that would allow for, you know, X amount of people to be able to gather physically separated in a location. Jason?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly correct. There, there's no guarantees that this will be able to happen. Much like the outdoor dining district, it's about creating an opportunity that if and when the provincial orders allow for gatherings, this would be something that would be able to happen and be, and be ready to go. So the lease agreement would be structured such that there's no obligation on the city to, to make the space available until such time as the provincial orders allow it to happen. I can tell you that in some conversations I've had with the music sector, if those provincial orders allow for something in the neighborhood of 50 is where something like this might become viable. The council's quite correct. If the gatherings are still limited to five, then there's gonna be no viable option here to, to do anything with the space. Probably has to get into the range of 50, which may or may not happen, may or may not happen while the summer season still allows for an outdoor venue. But at least it would be something that would be ready to go if permissible.
Thank you. And the other question I had, Mr. Mayor, this is on the top floor, the parkade. So what's the cost to put fencing around it to prevent any excited, passionate dancer from losing their footing?
From dancing off the, off the roof?
I was trying to find a diplomatic way of saying it, so.
That's why I like moon dancing, yeah.
Should've stopped at the wall.
Yeah, there is a high wall there, but Jason, go ahead.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. That, that's an important consideration. Our expectation would be that it would be fenced, that you would not have access to the, to the edge. It would be fenced with that. I would expect it's that sort of steel security fencing that you typically see at outdoor concerts to control access from crowds. And that would be part of the, whoever the successful operator would be, would have to file a layout plan with the city for approval as to where they put their staging, where they put their amplification, how it would be properly fenced, where they would have their sanitation station, things like that would have to be submitted for the city's approval.
So out of the $7,500, Jason, would the fencing come out of that also?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that the $7,500, I, I would expect that that would be, would cover some of the fencing costs and maybe a bit of a costing for, for a riser. So there's a nominal city contribution in there for those hard, hard costs. That would be the only thing that the city would be responsible for. Everything else would be above and beyond. That would be on the operator.
Thank you very much. It's worth a shot, guys. We'll see what happens.
Thank you. Councilor Marula?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna commend Councilor Farr and yourself and, and Jason Thorne. I think it's something worthy of assessing. My questions were basically answered based on Councilor Clark's discussion. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, just a couple of questions. I am supportive of this. In fact, within Water Down, we, we have had some bands that have been playing in driveways and people keeping their, their distancing lining the street, being in many cases more than six to 10 feet away, enjoying the music. So just a couple of questions, though. Jason, could you, Jason Thorne, could you please explain if the band is gonna be up on the roof and the risers are there and the fencing is there, where are the people going to stand to be able to watch the performance?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the operator will do the, will do the precise layout plan, but I would expect that the fencing would be around the entirety of the occupied area. So all of the staging, the audience, the sanitation stations, everything would be within a fenced area. So you'd be able to go up on the elevators or, or one or two of the stairwells, and you would be contained within a fenced-in area at, at the roof deck. You wouldn't have full range to go wherever you wanted. It would all be contained within one area that's large enough to accommodate whatever the allowable gathering size is, if it's 50, with the required physical separations between people.
Okay, and so if I'm understanding correctly, the folks that are wanting to watch the band or listen to the music, they would go up onto the roof as well within a fenced-in area provided, I mean, depending on what the province says for gatherings, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. I would expect these would be ticketed and somebody would need a ticket to go up and, and watch the show.
Okay, I mean, I am supportive. We, you know, we need this. The residents need it. The only thing is that I don't want to, this motion to give any kind of a false information out there that people think that, oh, this is great. You know, we're back in business. And what, what are we going to do if 2,000 people show up and most of them are down on the street? And definitely not looking after the physical distancing. What, what, what then? Is there gonna be something written into the lease agreement? Because I'm just very concerned about people getting the wrong idea, thinking, oh, this is great. We're open for business. We can have, you know, a rooftop performance and everybody, kinda like Supercrawl, everybody come down, downtown.
Jay?
Yes, that's through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the operator would require to have a security plan for how they would control access to this, to the upper area, as well as how they would patrol the rest of the facility. And I would expect, again, it's, it's a very large area for a fairly small audience size. It would be, the stage area would be interior to the area, so you're not gonna be able to see anything from the state, from the, from the street. This is, this is not, you know, you two playing on the rooftop and leaning over the edge to play to the crowd below. This is meant to be a show for the people who have acquired a ticket and who are on the rooftop to see that show. So I would, from sound volumes as well as location of staging, it would be designed so that there'd be not much opportunity for gathering down below on the street level. That was a key consideration. In, in looking at options, we consider different parks, Bayfront Park, Gage Park, all those sorts of places. But in those places, you can't control the crowd size. Anybody can show up, whether you put a fence up or not, people can just show up. So the hope here is that we can do something that would be able to better control the crowd size.
Okay, thank you. And are there any rooftops in the area that are privately owned where people could gather to have a visual of this and be able to see it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, not particularly well. I mean, from some of the taller buildings on a balcony, yeah, you could, you could see something. From a, from a private balcony in a, in an apartment, there would be some areas you could see it. But generally, there's not a lot of surrounding residential that would have any sort of ability to, to look down into the site. Or, or, I mean, you can't get onto the top of the roof of the Eaton Center as far as I know, so not a lot of opportunity to look down in.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate the answers. I just felt we needed to ask these questions because we know what happens. You know, it's a great opportunity and, you know, our residents, they're, they're, they're an innovative bunch. And, and so there could be a way of figuring out something that we hadn't considered. My final question, Mr. Mayor, is all of this or, you know, going to be written into the lease agreement that is signed with, with the, with the applicant, whoever that is?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it would be.
Thank you very much. I'm supportive.
Thank you very much. Councilor Pauls?
The chair, through the mayor, I wanna ask you, Jason, would people have to pay to attend this place if it's music?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that, it'd be ultimately up to the operator. They would have the license to, to, to run the events in the space. A requirement of the license would be a maximum occupancy, so they'd have to control the numbers to the number that we set for them. I've been estimating that at maybe 50, but that's all gonna be dependent upon provincial orders and public health guidelines. I would expect that in order to make it viable, it would have to be a paid ticketed event. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be if they find some other way of doing it. But it would have to be a limited capacity to the number that we set, however the operator decides or is able to do that.
And my question is, are we putting a precedent that we could, I think it's creative. You're thinking out of the box. I think it's great. But what about a park like McQuiston Park? We could have something there and sell only 50 tickets and have something there. Or Gage Park. What precedent are we setting doing this? There's other creative people that live on the mountain as well. So I don't understand, which I, I'm supportive and I will support. I love creative things. I love thinking outside the box. But we're putting precedent of what we're, what area gets it and what area doesn't. I live on Ward Seven, and I have a lot of my constituents said, let's something happen on the mountain. So if, if it's a paid event and only 50 people can go, then therefore we could put it on the Queston Park or Gage Park or wherever. So what's your thoughts on that?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that would still be permitted. Our seat process, the special event process does allow for those things in normal times that you could do some sort of festival concert, something like that in, in a city park, and you go through the seat process for that. We aren't permitting those at the moment because in those types of locations, you can't control the number. So you wouldn't be, even if we get to the point where you're allowed to have a gathering of 50, we'd have to be assessing some of the seat applications at that time. But if the, if there's no way that you could control it, that more than 50 couldn't show up and gather there, that would be a challenge. So those opportunities still exist through the seat process to use other city parks for events. In normal times, again, it's, it's a bit more challenging to do that right now because of the, the challenge of accommodating larger crowds.
Right. And in this area, I guess Councilor Clark mentioned, what about if somebody falls over or that there is risk as well? Like I said, I'm supportive. I love being creative. But I, I appreciate that you said we could have it somewhere else as well in normal times, but this is COVID. And I just, I just, we're setting a precedent that, yeah, we're gonna do it here, but not there because it's COVID. Even though it's more dangerous to have it there, I think a park would be so much easier. 50 tickets sold, 25 tickets, whatever the limit is. And yet we choose, you know, that area. But I am supportive. I'm just want to be clear of what we're doing, that everybody has a chance to also have entertainment where they live. So thank you.
So we're, we're gonna be in this COVID scenario for quite some time. And so this is just an opportunity to allow for a music venue to happen in a controlled environment. It's difficult to control that environment when you're in a park. You cannot, you cannot mitigate the, the amount of people that are gonna be there. In this particular location, you have a confined space accessed by elevator that can be controlled and managed. If, if, you know, folks wanna do a, an event at McQuiston Park or some other park on the mountain, they're free to come to the, put in a seat application. And when the numbers, when the province says you can gather in groups of 50 or more, or 50 or thereabouts, anyone can bring an application forward to do a venue in a location of their choice. It'll go through the seat process and, and get the same kind of treatment. We're not, we're not discounting that from happening. We're just saying that here's one venue that we can control, that we can actually make happen sooner rather than later that provides the music industry an opportunity to have a venue. Other, other opportunities are out there, so no one's dismissing any of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Whitehead?
Jason, how many kilometers of roadway in the city of Hamilton?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know.
6,600. What's the square footage of mileage of Hamilton, kilometers area?
Is this a quiz?
No, I'm, I'm.
Just give us the answer if you're gonna be, that's not, not fair to be throwing that out there. If you know the answer, tell us what it is.
I'm trying to make a point, Mr. Mayor, that there's over 540,000 people living in Hamilton.
Right.
And yet we find another way to create a gated community where only a very specific small group of people have enhanced enjoyment. So you got the Solbi, it's all in the lower city, the Hatson, or the people in the lower city. Then you have now a concert over and above everything else that's going on downtown. We're gonna add an additional space, and I'm gonna ask our lawyers if it's bonusing, because that's another question I need to ask.
Sorry?
Or if it's bonusing, because what you're doing, dealing with is, first of all, bands aren't nonprofit. They're for profit. So that's one piece. And the operator, is it a nonprofit? Are we only restricted to nonprofit? Are we going to for-profit? If you go to for-profit, then we'll have to ask the lawyer, but is the, the question would be, have we assessed what the market value of that rental is and how it would compare to a comparable location? So there's a lot of questions that need to go through. I, I guess I can, where, because our taxes come from everybody, not just downtown. And yet it seems to me that we spent a lot of money in one geographic area. Like you got Supercrawl, major money downtown. Great, great program, a lot of people. But we keep creating more and more activities in one particular location in the city without looking at ways to reach out to other parts of this community. So my question is, what efforts are there? So my question is, what efforts are we making in in assistance of the music industry to look at locations where it's a very significant population, happen to live and pay good taxes for them to have the same opportunities?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I I I think the sector, we we thrilled if there's more than one site, and if there's other sites where you could do this kind of event. I certainly be open to it. And I'm sure that I'm sure the the music sector will be open to it as well. Uh, this site arose after a conversation with the sector boat. Is there places they can find opportunities for these kinds of events um in areas that didn't create risks of uh of larger crowds? So.
Yeah, you know, I'm saying this again in the context of equity. Equity and distribution of taxpayers' dollars is not being centered in one geographic area of the city, because there is a responsibility to meet the needs of everybody. Now, far too often, we focus on all taxpayers' taxpayers' money, while a big chunk of it goes to one area. I don't have a problem with it, but we should maybe sometimes have a nuanced effort to put some of these programming in other areas of the city that makes sense. So here's one for you. West Mountain Bachi, that multi-use facility, that could easily accommodate 50 people, probably not much more than that. Pretty easy to limit the people attending it and going in. So would that be a consideration?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, certainly. I mean, the the I I think there's residential surrounding there, which which might be an issue, but certainly if there's another site.
It's inside.
So so let me let me suggest this, Counselor. So, you know, I I I we worked on this one as one opportunity. If you have other opportunities, bring it. Uh, I think we're not, we're not trying denied, we're not trying to deny any other area from having the same opportunity in an area that works, that provides you know, the more music venues that we can create to help support the industry, the better. So if you've got a bachi, you know, situation where they can contain the the music venue and people can physically separate, fantastic, bring it.
So, yeah, so.
If you want to do one on, you know, on 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 Concession Street, and there's a place there that has a rooftop that can contain the the audience's space, and there's an opportunity to do it, bring it.
Mr. I heard we had to pay some fees. I I heard we're using taxpayers' dollars.
We are using some taxpayers' dollars to help support the industry.
In a time of a $50 million deficit or $60 million and growing. All right, we're we're looking at spending taxpayers' money on something that maybe 50 people could show up. And so I want to put, like, I'm just putting through the drill, because I'm going to stay on the taxes, because that's the real issue for me. But you've got a ready facility, you have to spend no money in, inside, so you're not impacting any residents. And you got parking. So um clearly what we're hoping is that the only people that show up are people that what, live in the neighborhood, or people that will actually drive down to listen to the concert? I'm not understanding the concept. What's the objective? Neighborhood bands every day all the time? Like, what what is the objective here?
To have a to have a music venue that people can attend to to enjoy that currently isn't available for them indoors. Go ahead, Jason.
Sorry, through Mr. Mayor, I was going to say that, you know, the the operator is going to establish the program um in terms of what sorts of um events they want to hold. I I think like any other venue would be open to anybody in the city. Um, and and to the suggestion of an indoor site, at this point in time, we can't do them indoors. I think that's what this sector is struggling with. If you're allowed to have 50 people indoors, if the provincial order goes straight to that level of permission, I would suggest you probably wouldn't even need this facility, because then all of the existing venues and theaters and everything else would be able to bring the bring their audiences back in and restart. So I don't think that's what's going to happen, which is why having an outdoor option as an interim uh is what's being proposed here. But if if indoor facilities are permitted, then there's a lot of opportu- more opportunities that become available.
So what I'm suggesting is a an area that, uh, I think it's 250, 300 seats. So when I take the separation piece into consideration, I think you could probably, you know, the square footage piece, you could probably accommodate 50 pretty pretty quickly in that kind of space. And you got control. But that's not the point. The point is, should we be throwing money out right now that we don't have? That we don't have, and we know, we might be hit making uh decisions on breakfast programs, for God's sake. We don't know where we're where we're going. But it's not, it's 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 not going to be a, it's going to be a tough run. I just don't know why we we continue looking at ways of spending money, not looking at a pocketbook and looking at the impacts of taxpayers and saying, let's bring another program, let's spend more money. Where's the money coming from? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, second time speakers, Counselors Partridge and Clark. Councilor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to make really a quick point, if I may. It is 7:05 PM right now. We started at 9:30. If it was a regular council night at 5 o'clock, it would be 2:30 in the morning. So um, in the future, I will be bringing a motion forward that we stick with 9:30 AM for our meetings. And we'll allow for lots of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just get clarification from Mr. Thorne? So item C and D, it talks about $7,500 from the Economic Development Reserve and $1,500 for legal fees. So if the cost to set this up exceeds that budget, does it come back to council, or does it just proceed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's the upset limit of the city's contribution. So anything beyond that would be the responsibility of the operator.
So there'll be no additional costs? No one will be coming back to the city saying, we need more money for this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. If if it turns out that the 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 business model is not there, and like I said with us, if the crowds are limited to 50, it's it's not a, it's a tough business model.
It's a narrow.
It's narrow. We may not get, we may not get any bids. That that is a possibility. So this is an opportunity that's being put out. Maybe it will work, maybe it won't, but the the city's contribution is capped.
Thank you. That's all I need to know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to go to the uh the vote on this topic. Moved by Councilor Faris, seconded by myself. All in favor or opposed? You need any vote indicators from anyone? Everyone's in? Thank you. And that has carried 14 to 2. I'm going to go to item 63, which is to the loan agreement between the City of Hamilton and the Winona Peach Festival. I think uh Counselor Pearson, you wanted to introduce that motion. Counselor Pearson?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And it's amendment to the loan agreement between the City of Hamilton and Winona Peach Festival. So whereas council is meeting on March 29, 2017, approved item six of the Audit and Finance Administration Committee Report 17 dash 004, which authorized the City of Hamilton to provide an interest-free loan to the Winona Peach Festival to fund electrical upgrades of the city-owned Winona Park in an amount not to exceed $100,000 to be repaid in full over a period of 10 years from the date of the loan advance. Whereas in May 2017, the Winona Peach Festival entered into a loan agreement with the City of Hamilton to fund the expenses for the updating of the electric service within the city-owned Winona Park to comply with the electrical safety regulations. And whereas this loan agreement requires annual payments of $10,000 to be made to the City of Hamilton. Whereas restrictions designed to prevent the spread of COVID-19 virus are in place, limiting the gathering of large groups in public places. Whereas the Winona Peach Festival has determined that these restrictions will prevent them from holding the annual Winona Peach Festival event in 2020. And whereas the Winona Peach Festival relies on the proceeds from the annual Winona Peach Festival event to make the annual loan payment. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and clerk be authorized and directed to execute an amendment to the loan agreement between the City of Hamilton and the Winona Peach Festival for the funding of the electrical upgrades of the city-owned Winona Park to suspend the 2020 annual payment and extend the term of the agreement for one year beyond the original date in a form satisfactory to the General Manager of Finance and Corporate Services and the city solicitor. And if I could speak to it, and I'm asking that Counselor Brenda Johnson will second it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So um, I'm sure everybody read in the paper a few days ago or saw it on Facebook or online that unfortunately, the President Linda Schuker and the Winona Peach Festival um committee has made the decision to um cancel the Winona Peach Festival. Things were just getting too tight. This would have been their 53rd event, and it's very, very unfortunate. I was um, you know, I worked closely talking with Linda and keeping apprised of what was happening, what the decisions were going forward. So my first suggestion when she did talk to me was the concern of the payment for this loan. And I want to thank Mike Zagaric um and Brian Mullen for for helping uh direct this. If I forgot another staff person's name, my apologies. But we only hope and pray that the festival can go on next year, and what we can do to assist them in this little way will go a long way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's great. Thank you. Any comments or questions on it? Counselor Partridge? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um, you know, I I just wanted to say that this is, I'm sure it was a real heartbreak for everyone involved, especially for Linda Schuker. You know, she diligently uh attends council every fall, right after the Peach Festival, within a couple of months, and and has always a check in hand to help pay back this um, this money that gets loaned out to the Winona Peach Festival. And so I I just want to give a shout out to um to to everyone that's involved in it, because she really is. She's she's uh got a terrific team there, as Counselor Johnson will attest, and Counselor Pearson, who uh get put to work every year. Um, anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Tough call to make. You know, I think many organizations are going to have to assess whether they're going to have their summer or fall events. And uh, you know, in in this environment, it takes a lot of lead time to make that happen. And I think uh the Peach Festival made a wise choice, because uh it it may not have been allowed at that time, and you would have put all that time and effort into planning something that isn't going to happen. And so uh I think uh it was a sad, unfortunate call for them, but deferring their uh their payment for for the uh the year makes uh nothing but sense. So good, good motion. Uh, I see no further comments other than Counselor Johnson. Sorry. Go ahead.
Shoot.
Uh-oh.
Oh, sorry, I did have it down. Apologies. It's been a long day. Thank you so much, Counselor Pearson, for taking good care of this organization. If everybody will um understand that this money was actually loaned to them so that they could put the infrastructure into our park. So it's, it ends up being coming our infr- infrastructure. So I really appreciate everybody's support on this, because it's all a win-win situation at the end of the day. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. So a mover and a second to Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All in favor? Or opposed? All votes are happening. Good stuff. That's carried unanimously. Thank you. And Counselor Marula, you're going to leave this notice of motion as a notice of motion?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. We'll we'll deal with it, I guess, next week. And we're going to go to, so we're deferring the item uh on the motions until after we come out of camera. So we're going to go to statements by members at this point. Notice of motion, sorry, 73? Oh, chat, oh, sorry. Yes, that's right. There's an added moment. Counselor Collins.
No problem.
You had an added notice of motion.
Yeah, my apologies for the late arrival. I was still um interacting with staff this morning to get this finished and completed in order to have it on today as a notice, and then we'll entertain it uh next week. And so I'll just read it out. Whereas it is estimated that, oh, sorry. Whereas it is estimated that transit ridership is currently down 70%, and whereas transit ridership fell 4% after the 2008 recession, and 219 ridership is relatively unchanged from 2008 ridership numbers. Whereas it is anticipated that recovery and post-recovery transit ridership will be well below average annual pre-COVID levels for the foreseeable future. Whereas the decline in ridership will result in significant loss in fare box and transit ridership revenue in 2020 and 2021. And whereas the municipal act requires municipalities to pass balanced budgets, thereby offsetting lost transit ridership revenues through potential increase in tax levy. And whereas the city's transit area rating formula is largely weighted to the former city of Hamilton, whereas it is anticipated that the cost of declining transit revenues will be shifted primarily to the former city of Hamilton. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to provide a report to the General Issues Committee that summarizes the financial impact of declining transit revenues and a list of options available to council to temporarily offset the loss in 2020. So keep that as an.
Okay, and we'll deal with it maybe next meeting. You have a couple of meetings that you can trigger that on. Thank you for that. And we're now going to go to statement by members. I'm going to start with Counselor Clark, and we'll work up the around the horseshoe that isn't a horseshoe right now. Sorry? Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate this opportunity. Once again, I want to thank all the residents for for cooperating with uh all of the rules and regulations to protect each other and their family as we go through this crisis. It is still a bit of a challenge for us at the Devil's Punch Bowl. I'm asking people not to park along the streets on Ridge Road or on First Road. Tickets are being issued. Tickets are being issued for entering into the Devil's Punch Bowl Park. It's still a closed facility. Uh, and so we still have lots of concerns up in that neighborhood. Um, the police and municipal law enforcement have been up there every weekend, and and it surprises me constantly how people seem to be willing to pay the ticket as a cost for of coming down to to look at this tourism site. And um, it's putting a lot of people at risk. So um, just work with us as we get through this last few months of hurdles um and and avoid the area as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, unfortunately, and it also attracts a lot of people from out of town. Waterfalls have that had that problem pre, you know, pandemic, and certainly still has that problem now. Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. Um, you know, I think residents are pleased to see that the leaf and yard waste program has started back up. Uh, on as a weekly pickup, there are some backlog. So just asking residents to be patient. I'm trying to deal with the calls and redirecting staff to come back. I've also had an increase in illegal dumping, and I don't for the life of me understand why. Because our waste program, other than leaf and yard, has not changed. So to residents out there, just remember that it's a huge cost and an unfortunate blight on your neighborhood um when when these things happen. So, you know, what people can do, um, I really appreciate it. Again, also, I want to commend residents who have followed and continued to follow the social distancing, especially uh around the parks, though I had, I did have issues on the weekend in some of our major parks, Winona Park being one. And I'm also getting calls and complaints about children, I will say quote unquote, removing the tape and getting back at our play equipment. Reminder that again, it is out of commission, though you should not be playing on it right now. So whatever we can do, just keep that messaging going out there. I do want to send thanks to the um, to the library, Mr. Mayor. You know, uh, myself and Counselor Partridge are members on the library board. And, you know, they've done a stupendous job. Not only following up with a number of seniors during this time of COVID, but also trying to put together um online services. And and I've just read that, you know, from March 15th, April 25th, there was over 400,000 digital circulations, up 70% this year. So just think about how much has been involved in getting these all up and running and being efficient. Over 160,000 checkouts were were done using overdrive. And um, without some visit video streaming, the services increased 253%. So to our library, um, director of the library and the library board members and all of staff who continued to do a terrific job. On top of that, having to um put in in place the um, the heat, um, the cooling station at the central and a couple of the libraries uh yesterday. So they've been doing a tremendous job. You know, we always look at libraries as just something little tucked away, and we'll just go in and grab what we want. But it is a major, major service out there when there's not a lot of other things that people can do. So I I want to commend them. And again, I wish everybody to continue to be responsible. Hopefully, we can get this curve to come down and not take a bounce and get on with normal lives. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Yep, thank you very much, sir. And we did talk about the Peach Festival canceling, which means I have 30 young folks right now with pretty sad faces. Uh, my whole crew is is uh pretty disappointed, but understandable. As the city representative on the Canusa Games, and my husband is the new coordinator for the Canusa Golf, we have some sad news as well. Canusa has officially canceled their event for this year, and uh we look forward to next year. They actually made the decision about three weeks ago, but uh between Flint and Hamilton, they were working out a good press release. So to all the volunteers, I'm so sorry that that's happened as well. But I I know everybody deep in their hearts know it was the right decision.
What year would it have been? What year would it have been this time around? 50 something? 55?
No, I think it was more than that. I think we were in our 60s. I'll have to get back to you. I'll get, I'll take that offline and get back to you.
An amazing track record. Yep.
It is, absolutely. Uh, and I used to be a a competitor. I was a coach, and now I'm the city representative. So it's been a full circle for me. We've been asking everyone to send in good news stories, and we're getting tons of them. We have residents who are making and donating face masks and and scrub caps and uh getting lots of stories about families that are going out as a as a unit, and they are cleaning up around their own community just as a family. their own community just as a family. Glamburk Community Services is still working, folks. They're still providing Meals on Wheels and other programs that are virtual, and they are there to offer support for anyone who's shut in, especially seniors. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and that's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, two things. First of all, I too am experiencing some good news. I've got an email in for one person that their family have collected 85 bags of garbage. I want to thank Craig Murdock and his guys because they made a place where they can put them, and our waste staff pick them up. I have another resident who owns a garage, and he goes out into Martin Road and found about, I believe it's 40 or 50 tires that were thrown off and down a deep valley in the conservation area. And he arranged for one of his tow trucks to come over and winch them all up and get them out of there. So there is some great news stories when people have some time on their hands, and they're showing their family how they can get some exercise and contribute to their community at the same time. So thank you to all my residents that are doing that and others throughout the city. Just one question, and I'd like to direct it to the city manager. I'm not sure if Jeanette Smith is on the line or not. Are you there, Jeanette? There she is. Jeanette, I'm, we heard from Paul and Elizabeth today where we're going to be doing virtual meetings for a while yet. And in fact, we heard them also say that a number of our staff will continue working from home for an extended period of time. And quite often, email is fine, but you can sometimes get bantering on that. We're trying to reach out and ask staff questions to prepare for a council meeting or a committee meeting, respond to constituents. And some of the staff have their office phones forwarded to their cell, but others do not. And it seems like such an easy solution. We have an address book in Outlook. Is there any reason why the general managers, the directors and the managers can't have their cell phones on that address book in addition to their office phone number?
So, can't hear you, Jeanette. One second. For whatever reason, so you must be off. Are you? There you go.
I think I'm there now through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe there'd be a reason why we can't, Counselor Ferguson. So let me look into it. I might link back with you just to make sure I understand exactly what you're looking for, but I can definitely look into that. Whatever we can do to make it easier.
In under search, people, there's a thing called the address book. You click in there where you can get the extension number of all employees. It would be nice, I don't expect you to put them all in, but everybody down to the manager level, put their cellphone in. There's spare columns in there so that we can call their cell direct when they're not working in the office right now, but working from home.
Yep, we can definitely look at that through you, Mr. Mayor, especially because we know this is going to last for quite a while.
Okay, thanks very much. That's all we got.
Is that city access only? That's not a public address book, right?
It's in the city's Outlook, so I suspect a city address only.
Should be internal only.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Ferguson. Counselor Vanderbeek?
Thank you. Am I on? Okay.
You are.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing that I'd like to share. I want to remind people that Greensville's parks, and so I'll reword that, Greensville's conservation parks and the trails that are associated with it. So Spencer Gorge, Webster's Falls, Toose Falls, the Dundas Peak, and all the trails that are affiliated with that are not open. They're closed, and there is no parking in Greensville. So please do not come and get a $250 ticket for parking in Greensville. It's very important. We do not want anyone to get a ticket, but if you do park, you will get a ticket. So please, stay home and enjoy yourself. Don't ruin your day with a $250 ticket. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
First to start, a question of privilege. What is generally the rule behind that? You call privilege?
Counselor Clark? The ruling.
You want to know the rule for point of privilege?
Point of privilege? What's the rule on point of privilege?
What's your general rule around a point of privilege?
It's generally if a member of council feels that something was said directly to them that they've, their impression is that it was derogatory towards them.
And if they were named?
And if they were named.
Okay, so if they're not named, is it a point of privilege? If you don't, you don't indicate what ward it is, is it a point of privilege?
Counselor?
It depends if that member of council feels that it was directed towards them.
And then, but whose decision is it to determine if it's a point of privilege?
It is the chair.
Right, so traditionally.
Ultimately, it is the chair.
Traditionally, the practice is being if somebody's named or the ward is identified, that's a point of privilege. Never outside of that practice have we recognized a point of privilege. And I want to get clarification on a go-forward basis because it gets used way too often and way outside the rules. So I'm just trying to get clarification for future.
But.
I'm kind of choking on that a little bit because you're the one that uses it more often than anybody. So that's a little rich, but anyway, carry on. I had something in my throat there. I was choking on something.
Only if my name, only if my.
Chicken bone, maybe.
Only if my name's been called. I don't mention it otherwise.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I just want to.
That isn't, that isn't quite true, but carry on. Sorry, I won't, I won't debate it with you.
Check the tape. The nice thing is we have to, so we don't, we don't have to just say it. We can check it. So the reason I'm saying that, because I was accused of gaslighting on a point of privilege where I never named the person. And it was recognized as a point of privilege because the speaker was allowed to speak. So the reason I'm raising it, because I looked it up and tried to get better understanding, and I looked at why I've taken the position I have. And I'm not gaslighting, but I stretched the imagination. When somebody posts on a text, a car or a half ton on an assembly line and basically refers it to it in a derogatory way, or somebody, when we're having a debate on the smell of marijuana and the impacts, why we need to justify pit decks or bylaws, how the car traffic stinks and they know how we feel, every time there's a reference, it's to the automobile. I want to highlight that because I wouldn't be drawing this from nowhere. I'm not doing it in bad faith. But I can give you example after example since this term of this council where there was nuances every time to the automobile. That's not gaslighting. That's fact. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I can assure you no automobiles are harmed in my next comment. I want to give a shout out to the Flamborough Food Bank and to the volunteers. You know, on the weekend, well, over the last couple of weekends, actually, and during the month of May, volunteers, a particular shout out to Melissa Zagala, and I apologize if I mispronounced her name, but they have raised over $14,000, $14,000 for the Flamborough Food Bank. And it was through a bottle drive, which I find absolutely amazing, how two weekends, I believe it was, during, during May. I also want to give a shout out to the Water Down Food Bank, and they continue their weekly deliveries to the international students at Mohawk College. And, you know, we, we sometimes forget that there are international students in our city. And, you know, throughout the entire city, people are reaching out and helping other people. And I, and I'm just, I'm so proud of how everyone has come together. I also want to give a shout out to the Carlisle United Church Ladies Group. They have been making face masks. And, you know, I had a chat with Erica Freezen from Carlisle, and my goodness, she, she's just, you know, with her group, I think they've made over something like 400 to 500 face masks since this all began. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to all those folks to say how important it is, the volunteer work that they're doing, and how much they are appreciated. Thank you.
Indeed. Thank you so much. Counselor Daco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. You're good? Sorry?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Nothing for you? Okay, thank you. Counselor Falls? One second here. Start, start again because we just.
I just thank you. Okay. Okay, I just want to say as the Chair of the EMS, Emergency and Community Service, I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of all the EMS workers under the great leadership of Chief Michael Sanderson, who since the outbreak has been working tirelessly, not only putting themselves on the front line and on a daily basis juggling so many emergent things at the same time. Having to make meaning and implementation of the rulings ended down by the province, but also having responded to all local municipal needs and made a quick decision that affects all of us. They have done an outstanding job, and I want to commend them and thank them on behalf of council and this great city of Hamilton. So thank you and great job.
Great, thank you. Much deserved praise for their work, 100%. Counselor Jackson?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I want to salute all frontline workers for the great work they're continuing to do. How exhausting it must be after about 12 weeks since most of the provincial and municipal lockdowns and regulations have come in. And I want to loop back around to where I started with my first ad in the newspapers, primarily saluting the medical staff of our hospitals, LTCs, and retirement homes, doctors, nurses, PSWs, maintenance workers, social workers, and others. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, again, I want to salute and thank the overwhelming majority of the residents of the East Mountain for the wonderful social distancing they're doing, compliance, adhering to exactly what our municipal leaders, our doctors, and the provincial government and premier Ford and leadership have been saying all along here in Hamilton. Fingers crossed, not to jinx us, but we don't have anywhere near the problem with social distancing like some other municipalities in the province do. Mr. Mayor, June is Seniors Month, and as you know, Mr. Mayor, sadly, one of the casualties of this plague, the worldwide plague, is the cancellation of the Seniors Awards Night that usually draws 600, 700 people to Michelangelo's, recognizing, saluting, thanking all the volunteer seniors who put out their time and effort to help other seniors in the community who are shut-ins and are less mobile, have medical conditions. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to have that great dinner, but June is still Seniors Month. And for those seniors that are still doing whatever they can safely for other seniors in need, I want to thank them and thank all our seniors across the city. June is your month, and we must never forget how those who came before us, Mr. Mayor, and are still with us, helped to build our city. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind me mentioning your office, my office, Counselor Collins's office, as the three members of the Police Service Board, working with Hamilton Municipal Bylaw. As you know, the last few weeks, most of my colleagues have shared with me the fact that they've all got Mario Andretti wannabes out on the roads that have been speeding, stunt driving, creating dangerous situations with excessive speed. The project Recalibrate, great job by Chief Gert and the HPS over the last two weeks, over 800 tickets issued. Can you imagine in two weeks, over 800 tickets for speeding, racing, and stunt driving across our city? Just knuckleheads, just ridiculous, the, the way they're putting people's lives at peril, Mr. Mayor, just because there's less vehicles on the road. Well, Mr. Mayor, you and I were chatting, and I'm consulting as well with Halton to see if the Highway Traffic Act alone can give our police service the extra oomph they need to enforce what's now become a secondary, but growing and increased problem of noise pollution on our roads with mufflerless motorcycles and mufflerless cars and trucks. And it's, and I'm getting more and more complaints, Mr. Mayor, but you and I are consulting. Let's see what Halton has done in a very novel way, apparently giving their police service more teeth to enforce and issue charges and tickets. But we hopefully, between you, me, and Counselor Collins's office, working with Bylaw and Chief Gert, and in my research with my office, let's see what we can come back with, maybe something that would be palatable for members of council down the road. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just, just to be clear, not having a muffler on your vehicle is illegal already, and police can charge as a result of that. What happens is that a lot of people take the baffles out of the muffler. That then makes it a noisy muffler as opposed to what it's supposed to be, a quieter quieting of the noise that comes out of that. So I understand that the chief is on it. I've spoken to him. You've spoken to him. Chief Bergen is on it as well, and I'm sure that they're going to be out there proactively looking at those issues. I'm going to turn to Counsel Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to raise the whole issue of modular housing. And so many of you know last year that I was in discussions with some of my colleagues about area rating and the, and the, and the prospect of investing in Hamilton's first modular home development for affordable housing purposes. And I was actually planning a trip to Vancouver in April, which obviously didn't happen for obvious reasons. And, and I read just this past week that Toronto has opened a facility, and certainly there are all kinds of benefits that come with modular housing, very compact, it can be moved quite easily, and you can construct them in no time at all, and they're very, very inexpensive. So with Paul's discussion today around the whole theme of reinventing the way we provide our shelter services, and of course, we know that with the poor economy will come as the dominoes fall, there will, there will be a much larger housing waitlist than the one that we have today, unfortunately, which is already at a record high number. So I wanted to raise this issue right now and ask whether our staff could come back when time permits and resources permit to committee with the prospect of possibly looking at modular housing for either shelter and/or affordable housing purposes. So I wanted to raise that first and foremost, and that gets me to my other, the other issue that I wanted to raise, and that is around the stimulus package that's being talked about nationally. Of course, as has been discussed previously at GIC, we talked about the need for the federal and provincial governments to come to the table to assist us with our year-end deficit that we're looking at, and has, as has been referenced so many times today and prior, we're at about $60 million. Other municipalities, Toronto is over a billion. And so we know that last time through the recession, the feds were very quick to put out an infrastructure package. And so the last time we applied, and even up until the application we had maybe several months ago, I remember we were debating the Ann Castor Center and all kinds of different things. It was the 11th hour, and we really had no opportunity for council to have a good discussion about what priorities we see as putting on the table for Minister McKenna and for the broader community as it relates to a stimulus package. So I'm hoping that at some point in time, either through your office or through Jeanette's office or your two offices, we could coordinate some kind of a discussion that talks about what kind of priorities we want to invest in, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's shelters, whether it's transportation, any of those issues. I think it's, now's the time for us to start talking about it so that we're not caught flat-footed as we were last time, and we have an opportunity to have an open and transparent discussion about what our city needs and how that may fit hand in glove with whatever federal infrastructure stimulus package comes our way. So just wanted to put that on the table, and I think that's it.
Good point. Thank you. I'll follow up with Jeanette as well. It's certainly been a topic of discussion with the minister. And one of, one of our points has been you don't have to look too far in municipalities. They, they have their capital budgets that are pretty much set, 10-year capital budget. So a lot of items in those capital budgets can be, can be advanced quickly because they're, you know, many of them are ready to go, but just don't have funding. So I think that's a good conversation to have sooner rather than later. Much appreciated. Counselor Marula? You're good? Thank you. Counselor Nan? Sure, not quite hearing you just yet.
Sorry, is that better? My apologies.
There you go.
Thank you. We'll start off with saying happy belated 16th anniversary to the man who's taking care of my kid all day today, even though she fell outside and has been having a few screaming tantrums that the public can't hear. Thank goodness, missing her mom. So I just wanted to say thank you so much, David, for all the ways in which you are pinch hitting in the home to allow me to stay in my, in my role fully 100%. And yeah, happy 16th. I wanted to share that our yard share program in Ward Three is well underway. For the folks who've been listening in on the developments, this is a resident-led initiative supported by the Ward Three Office, and it is based in the ward. And it's meant to basically shorten the food chain, food supply chain, and increase food security and foster community resilience here in the ward. Yard share volunteers connect landlenders with residents who have space for a garden but no time. Yard share volunteers connect land lenders with residents who have space for a garden, but no time with the. With people who are land tenders who have the time and the experience to tend to gardens. So if you are interested in either lending land or tending to it. Please email us at yardshareinwardthree@gmail.com or head on over to the Facebook page to fill out the intake forms. We will be beginning our prep of the gardens shortly. And we also have a big bank of seeds that have been coordinated with Environment Hamilton to help support the initiative. As well as some seed links that are left over from. From the Queston Farm. That's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Far? Not seeing Counsel Far at the moment, so let's go to Counsel Wilson. Counsel Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one announcement. One final reminder, June the ninth in the evening at eight P M kicks off the first book club for Ward One or anybody else who would care to join us. We will have Charles Marone with us, who is a very celebrated. Urbanist. And further to Counsel Collins's point, he will actually be also talking to us about stimulus and some really good case studies. What to be aware of when you're looking for senior order of government stimulus money, what works, what doesn't, what generates wealth in your community. And further to that, perhaps a need for all of us to reconsider some of our our capital work. So that is June the ninth. It'll be. Webex or Zoom, I'm not sure, at eight P M. If you could register, please go to mooringwilson.com. Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you. Counsel Far? You're good? Thank you. Okay, I've I've nothing to add other than. Thank everyone for their good work ongoing and remind members. Our citizens that all of your counselors are working and all of our staff are working. They're working online, but they're working nonetheless. So. All the contact information numbers that you have are active and viable and do call and ask for help and assistance we can provide. And on that note, I'm going to ask for the a motion on the closed session minutes of May twentieth, twenty twenty. Moved by Counsel Partridge, seconded by Counsel Pearson. And any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, any opposed, before we move into camera? All votes are in? Everything good? Counsel Nan? Counsel Partridge, you're okay? Thank you. Counsel Nan's good. Partridge is okay? And that's carried. Thank you. And I'll now have a motion to the closed session. That's moved by Counsel Whitehead, seconded by Counsel Clerk. To a motion to move into closed session to pursue the section eight, one subsection E, F and K of the city's procedural bylaw eighteen two seventy as amended in section. Two, three, nine, two subsection E, F and K of the Ontario Municipal. Thousand and one as amended, as the subject matter pertains to litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the city and receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege. Including communications necessary for that purpose. And a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the city of a local board. So now I'm motion move into camera. Please indicate yea or nay. Anyone, everyone able to vote? Anyone that wasn't able to, just give me a thumbs up. Jason Farr thumbs up. Counsel Whitehead thumbs up. Or a person thumbs up? I thought I'd let me submit again. Sure, I voted. I just I said yes, but I didn't submit. That was my failing. And that's carried. Thank you. Give us a moment to. Get in camera and then we'll carry on.